Sandra, you good?
Yes.
All right, it is seven o'clock. Let's start tonight's meeting with Fledge of Legions.
Fledge of Legions.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move into 2.02, the approval of tonight's agenda.
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
No worries. I was really nervous when I looked over there and you were gone. All right, Sandra?
Okay. And that was David and Angie, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, 2.03 Honoring Excellence. Dallas.
Good evening, everyone. I want to go back a little bit. We had a couple conflicts earlier in the semester and we wanted to introduce our recipients for the Carol Brown Excellence in Professional Development Award this evening. This would go back then to 2020, so we'll get to introduce you to our 2021 recipients in just a few months. But we did want to capture this recognition this evening and I actually had a chance to go out and present the awards like we have this semester, this school year, on Friday. But I thought I would just read a quick blurb about this Carol Brown Excellence in Professional Development Award. This award was designed to recognize Liberty Public Schools employees who exemplify effective use of professional development. Before her untimely passing, Carol Brown served as the conduit for processing numerous professional development requests in Liberty Public Schools for over 25 years. This award was established in her honor as a means of recognizing her dedication to Liberty Public Schools. Individuals selected for this award strive for continual self-improvement and act as a voice for professional development in their building or department. This evening, we are excited to announce that Kelly Brook Elementary Teachers Alicia Newitt and Natalie Potier have been selected as the recipients for 2020. We are also only a few months away again from introducing our recipients for 2020, so stay tuned for that announcement in the coming months. As I mentioned, had a chance to meet those two recipients and they wanted to share a few words. So Rob, if you could share that and then...
Hi, I'm Natalie Potier and I just wanted to thank the board for the recognition of the Carol Brown Award with my friend Alicia.
Hi, I'm Alicia Newitt. And again, I would also like to thank the board and also the Professional Development Committee for making this such a priority and continuing to honor teachers and allow us opportunities for professional development. This was really helpful so that we could grow as teachers, as learners. And so it's great to be in a district that recognizes the importance of professional learning for all of its staff members. So we thank the board, the committee, and the district in general for giving all the Jersey opportunities to grow as well.
One, maybe both of them are watching live this evening, so let's give them a big round of applause for this. And I do have the official award here in my possession. Looking through the names today, just some unbelievable recipients over the years. Christine Torres and Mary Coogan, Megan Bright, the list goes on and on. And Dr. Westfall, Dr. Moore. I promise I will return this to the wall upstairs first thing tomorrow morning. So tonight, we also wanted to highlight the Avid program. Corey Thomason and I on Friday had the opportunity to visit Liberty High School and more specifically, that Avid program. I wanted to thank Dr. Moore as she connected us with Ms. Sarah Adams, who you will see in this video premiere tonight. And just a tremendous group of staff and students at Liberty High that we visited on Friday. So I think without further ado, let's throw it to this video.
I was used to always being really good in my classes. I didn't really have to worry about like studying or doing a lot of stuff. And I got to high school and the picture kind of changed for me. Things started getting a little bit harder. My grades started dropping. And then I remember taking my first AP class and it got pretty much brutally destroyed and it was like the worst experience that I've had in a class before. And then I got introduced to Avid and it kind of changed things around for me for sure.
Avid stands for advancement via individual determination. It's really geared towards the kid that's the middle of the road. Kids that with a little help or a little support could take those advanced classes to better prepare them for college or for their next.
You know, I was just your typical student. Like I would just kind of be all over the place as of my study habits or as of how I took notes.
My freshman year, I ended with a 2.8, having an extra class where I can get help and learn new habits. I feel like that would be a great start to being better in school.
They want to do well in school and they have that desire to do well in school. So it's not an at-risk program, but it's just to help them to get to that next, whatever that may be. This program just really spoke to me and why it's important because I was also a first-generation college student. I got lucky. My parents were willing to dig. Not everybody's lucky like that. So the seniors that we have, a lot of them started with us our first year of Avid as sophomores. They were just kind of, they were here. They were a person in the classroom. They didn't try or they just didn't have confidence in themselves.
Because of Avid, they've allowed me to take harder classes and be comfortable with taking harder classes because they gave me the skill set. They've laid out the foundation.
Yeah, I would say Avid, they're the first ones to really like push me to start applying for the colleges that I should look into and...
Because of Avid, I feel like I got into the early college program for my school. Right now, I'm taking a little over 15 credit hours at my local community college and their classes are going really well for me.
A lot of them now are just shining. They're taking almost all advanced classes. They have confidence in themselves. They're not afraid to stand up and ask questions.
Throughout my years of high school, Avid has really helped. So my sophomore year went up to 3-1 and then junior year ended with a 3-6. And now I'll just keep going up.
But to think that like I was really like not doing well in an AP class my sophomore year of high school and now I'm, was just made dean's list last year from Maple Woods is like insane to me. I went from feeling like I was just passing by and doing the best that I could to like a lot more. And I'm really proud of the progress that I've made.
So while I'm not officially presenting that group with an award, I think it's worthy of a big round of applause for the work. So with that, that concludes honoring excellence for this evening.
Thank you, Dallas. I know we all appreciate the adjustment to virtual honoring excellence. Looking forward to getting everybody back though. 2.04 Public Comment. I know I have one blue card. Any other blue cards by chance to speak this evening? All right, well, let me read a quick blurb as Ms. Applegate, if you want to come up to speak here. People addressing the board will be asked to not repeat what someone before has said. Persons wishing to address any subject concerning Liberty Public Schools and/or education may certainly do so at the podium. Persons addressing the board are asked to keep their remarks concise and to the point, and each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. A person or persons may speak only once at the meeting. Concerns brought forward during public comment may be addressed by the superintendent or appropriate staff members usually within a week. And the board will not address concerns necessarily brought forward during public comment, but rather certainly work with the appropriate administration partners to respond to patron questions. And Ms. Applegate, if you would prefer to take your mask off, you certainly can to speak or you can leave it on. It's up to you.
Thank you. This is my first time attending a board meeting. I am relatively new to the school district, relatively new being a couple of years. This is the first time that I felt that I needed to be involved in what is going on within the board of my school district for my children. One thing I do like to point out, the audience is pretty empty. And I only knew about this meeting because I had spoke to several members within this district concerning an issue regarding the early release that was implemented the second semester. And before I move on to that, I want to say throughout the day, I was looking for additional items that would tell me that there was a board meeting happening today. And funny enough, I only saw that on the LPS53.org site and I had to dig a little bit within the calendar for today's details to know that it was here. It was not listed on the LPS Facebook page where I had noticed, I looked through the entire month of January and only saw events for holidays, but nothing regarding friendly reminders to the community that this board meeting was even happening. It is not on, for example, Manor Hills calendar. It is on the regular district's calendar. I did not receive an email. I am a part of the LPS53 email list and nor was I sent an email within a week or even today reminding us that the board was gathering a meeting today. So I honestly find that very disappointing that you had openly told me that you welcome the community, but yet we're not communicating when these board meetings are actually happening and reminding the community when it's happening. So moving on with that, I, with the early release that has been implemented in second, for the second semester, I am curious to know what the teacher professional development hours and scheduled time has been spent over the last three years, not including this year. I'm going to throw this year out due to the COVID challenges. But I'm more specifically curious to know of 2017, 18 school year, 18, 19 school year, and 1920. I was not, I attempted to find this information on my own on the website and could not find previous schedules to be able to compare calendars such as this to know the breakdown of teacher development times. That was kind of bothersome to me as well because I was really curious if the teacher professional development hours had increased or decreased or stayed the same with the new proposed calendar that you guys are voting on this evening. Back to the board, the lack of communication of what is going on with your guys' discussions for these meetings. I didn't see any kind of agenda put out to the public of say, this is what we're talking about. If I could be wrong, I may not be looking in the correct places and that could be on me. But again, like I said, I'm relatively new of what's going on within the board. So I would like to have those numbers to be curious as to if those professional teacher development days had increased or decreased or stayed the same. I also would be curious to know if you guys decided to do any kind of survey out to the public and the parents of the students in this district of how they feel that their students are doing even with the two-hour release every day. It's only happened twice, but yet I see that you guys are implementing this into the next school year's calendar, but I don't understand how you can vote on something that has only happened twice so far and you haven't gotten actual results of how that's hindering or helping students.
Got 10 seconds left. I'm sorry. I'm going to cut you off 10 seconds.
Well, let's just say I have several more to address and it's not going to get addressed, unfortunately.
Be more than welcome, obviously, to submit those via email and we can certainly address those before you get that way.
Well, I mean, considering we have nobody else, I can pull up my husband and he can read off the rest of them since my three minutes is up.
Unfortunately, if it's on the same topic, we do not allow based on our...
Why, I threw three different topics at you. So he can elaborate on one of the other ones for me.
I'm going to hold. We're going to, we're going to move on from public comment.
Even though you've, how often do you guys have community members here?
It just depends on the board meetings. Sometimes we have a few. Sometimes we don't have any.
And why do you think that is?
Sometimes people don't have stuff that they want to bring and address to the board, I suppose.
Well, I would be curious to know as to why there isn't more verbal communication out to the communities when these board meetings are happening and what discussions are going to be had in these meetings.
Yeah, we could talk about that in an offline conversation. We're going to go ahead and move on with the business of the board at this time.
Okay.
Moving on through the consent agenda, I want to remind viewers and folks in the audience, our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member.
I move the board approve consent agenda items 3.01 through 3.05.
Second.
Sandra?
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we'll move into the reports from the administration, starting with Innovation and Learning.
First off, 4.01, Dr. Moore is headed to the podium, so we'll hear from Innovation and Learning Department.
Good evening. In addition to what we presented in board docs, we also wanted to share, second semester is off to a great start. We have just under 2,300 students learning virtually at this time and just over 10,500 students who are learning full-time face-to-face or in a hybrid model. Early release at the elementary level has occurred twice now. Students who are staying are engaged in activities with support staff and members of the school community. Teachers are using this time to collaborate with their colleagues, at times focus on grade level planning as well as data team discussions. So we look forward to that time growing. We are headed into enrollment season as we begin to enroll students in courses at the secondary level this month. It's going to help us map out what Liberty Virtual School will look like next year and what those staffing needs may be. And then finally, we're beginning to plan for summer school already, so we should have more information at the February board meeting, how that will look. And if you have any questions, we'll take them at this time.
Questions of Dr. Moore or Dr. Westfall from the board?
Dr. Moore, did you say that secondary enrollment is going on this month?
We'll start this month. We'll start having the conversations this month and then it will roll into February. We'll start with high school?
Okay.
And get that going. And then middle school will, will start a little bit later.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Anything else for Dr. Moore or Dr. Westfall? I'm interested to see what reimagining summer school looks like.
More to come.
Yeah, more to come as we walk through that this spring. Thank you, Dr. Moore. 4.02 then as far as our equity report. Dr. Dixon Sehorn, as she comes to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. So glad to be here with you today. Just wanted to draw your attention to the Equity Office Board Report that was already shared with you in advance. Wanted to bring your attention to the revisions to the strategic plan that directly impact this office and that would be Plans 4, Plan 7, 8, 14, and 22. And so I would just share with you kind of the focus areas that fall under those plans. That way you have that available for you for ready reference. Wanted to move to the section where I shared departmental goals. Wanted to bring your attention specifically to Strategic Plan Number 7. That is, the Equity and Schools cohort falls under that particular plan and that is going to get underway officially on Monday, the 25th. So we do have our team. You know who those members of our district leadership team are. And so we're very excited about that. It'll get started with an orientation session where we'll learn about the audit that we're going to conduct for our organization. And immediately following that, we'll have a debrief as a team to then strategize how we move forward respective to our community. The next thing I wanted to share is in reference to Plan Number 14. I mean, that is around the DEI Focus Group Planning Team. We will be meeting this week and that is as a follow-up to the Panorama Survey that went out back in October that had again that diversity, equity, inclusion focus for families. And we did have about 50 families that said yes, count me in for participating in focus groups. So we'll be meeting to develop the questions that we're going to pose to families and then also planning for how we will actually roll that out. Our target date is end of February, last week in February, first week in March. And so more details to come on that. I also wanted to mention in reference to the LPS Curriculum Audit Task Force, which I have mentioned to you before, we too will be convening on the 27th. Very excited about that. I'll be in partnership with Dr. Westfall in that endeavor. And we do have about 32 staff members from across the organization that express an interest in participating in that task force. And so we will get things going and then talk about the tool that we'll be using from the Great Lakes Equity Assistance Center. Also wanted to bring to your attention Strategic Plan Number 8, and this is around the DEI Book Talk series that we implemented this school year. We're now on our third series and very excited about that one. We're currently reading White Fragility by Robin D'Angelo and it is being hosted facilitated by our very own Mr. D. Rosecrans, who's right here in the audience. And that first session went exceptionally well. So we're very excited about that opportunity that we have for professional learning. Also, wanted to just share with you, just as a reminder, you have received the Equity Action Plans. You've had an opportunity to review those for every school, every department. But also wanted to call your attention to the affinity groups that now have been developed as a result of that. And really, that's just, we took all the plans, looked at who had similar plans, kind of put them together in groups so that they then can have built-in support systems with one another and amongst one another here within the system. So people can just kind of continue to have really others they can consult, others that they can lean on in moving this work forward. Also had an opportunity today, this is not in my notes, to meet with the Diversity Festival Chair, Dr. Precious Kirk on today. So we're very excited about the Diversity Festival that will launch the last week in January. It will be virtual. And the most exciting aspect of the Diversity Festival is that we are bringing it into alignment with the graduate profile. So all of those key components that are on the, you know, the graduate profile, those expectations we have of students as they graduate from Liberty Public Schools, we're going to feature aspects of those profiles so that we tie the festival and all the things that they're doing to that. So wanted to see if there are any questions for me real quickly as I'm standing here before you at this time.
Any questions of Dr. Dixon Sehorn?
Dr. Sehorn, did, is there a date for that Diversity Festival? I feel like I've seen it.
The Diversity Festival is going to be all of the last week in January.
Okay.
So that is, oh goodness, I want to say the...
25th through the 29th.
Thank you. Yes, that entire week. So each day will feature one of the aspects of the graduate profile.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Dixon Sehorn.
Thank you.
4.03 then as far as our finance report. Ms. Cindy Sullivan.
Good evening. I have one donation to recognize tonight from Liberty Culvers Franchise Owners, Paul and Lynn Claus, of free meal cards valued at approximately $4,000. The cards were distributed to all operations staff as an end of semester. Thank you. And we would like to thank the Claus family for that generous donation to recognize our operations staff. Couple of other items to bring to your attention. We did receive the first payment of property taxes on Friday. And as I had hoped and anticipated, it did come in a little bit better than this time last year. We received about $1.3 million more this year than last year at this time. That could be due to a couple of things, increases in assessment, assessed value, as well as people paying sooner and on time and the county processing those payments quicker. So a combination of all of that, I would think, are the reason why we received that a little bit more this time. And hopefully come the end of January, that will continue when we receive our next payment around the 30th of the month. I also wanted to let you know that the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund of Two, which is SRT2, second round of that stimulus funds, have been allocated to the states, but they have not passed down what the allocation to the district will be. So we are waiting for those allocations to come out. I do know that the amount allocated to states was more than the first round, so we would anticipate to get some more over what we received the last time. So we will be sure and pass that information on when we get it. All of the previous relief funds have been... All of the previous relief funds have been spent and accounted for appropriately with all of the government entities. So we don't anticipate any issues with this round either. So other than what's in my report, if you've had any questions for me, I would be happy to answer them tonight.
Ms. Sullivan, back to the funding sources for COVID.
Yes.
If I'm reading it correctly, the district out of pocket has, or unexpected, I should say, has paid roughly two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Is that about right?
That has been moved into a COVID account code. I have no doubt that once we get the additional funding, we will be able to pull more into that fund that we just have not identified yet.
Yep.
Those are identified expenditures to date. Yes.
Other questions of Ms. Sullivan as far as her finance report this evening? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up from operations, we're going to hear from Mr. Steve Anderson.
Thank you. Just a few items to report in addition to the three reports that have been uploaded to Board Docs. First, just real quick, capital planning efforts are currently underway. This will be a little bit less than years past. It's probably about half the amount of dollars have been set aside for Fund Four expenses, so the plan will be somewhat reduced as compared to years past. But we're going to work through that over the next few weeks and then roll that out to you guys here probably in February. Vaccine planning is underway, and we're handling this on two parallel tracks at the moment. So one, you may have noticed in the news tonight that we're working in concert with a broader community group, including Clay County Public Health, Liberty Hospital, City of Liberty, Williamsburg College, and a few others, North Kansas City Hospital, North Kansas City Schools, to coordinate in and around efforts to push the vaccine out to the broader community. So that certainly is one of our commitments. But we're also kind of managing within, for staff as well, a plan to be able to secure and execute administrative vaccines for our staff. If those eventually kind of pull together on one effort, that's great. If not, we're still going to kind of head down both paths at the same time. Propane buses, as you all know, we've kind of moved on a path to purchase and secure ten propane buses. Those are now in our possession. And as noted in here, in addition to costing about forty percent less in fuel, it's also significant savings when it comes to maintenance and operations. So we're excited about that as well. And last, quick construction update. If you've had a chance to get over to Liberty High, they are wrapping everything up. Looks great. The sign was hung today on the exterior of the building. The front entrance is open. It is safe, and people are moving in and through the entirety of the building, so we're very excited about that. Some cleanup items over the next couple of weeks or month or so, and then we'll, we'll get everybody out of there. So appreciate the patience of the team at Liberty High. With that, if you have to take any questions.
That was one of the items that we talked about earlier this month at our cabinet meeting as we were reflecting on these last several months. And really, being able to kind of pinpoint those bond projects, being able to continue even during the course of the pandemic. Early on in March, when we were hearing about the pandemic, we thought perhaps that that might get put on hold as far as some of those projects for whatever reason. But I appreciate Steve and his team and their ability to continue to move things forward. So that's certainly a highlight of the last several months that we've kind of navigated. So, okay. Thanks, Mr. Anderson. Next up is four point oh five, Human Resources, Dr. Vogelar.
Thank you very much. Delighted to have the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Human Resources Department today. We have uploaded several documents. My usual monthly report is up there, but then our annual staffing report. This is the season when we launch into our staffing, specifically of classroom positions. There's a hiring season for, for teaching positions in the, in the fall. And, and that begins now and takes us through the rest of the school year and sometimes even into the summer months. I placed a data set that includes exempt or certificated staff data as well as our non-exempt or classified staff data, as well as a program evaluation for H R. I would like to pull out just because of the, in the interest of time, just the data relevant to one of our major strategic plan goals that we've talked about here with regard to growing our own or addressing the teacher pipeline shortage. I've invited a guest speaker to be with us as well. I'll be inviting up here in just a moment. I'll introduce him as well. Thank you to the H R team and the work that they do to really ensure that the very best and brightest end up in the classrooms here in Liberty Public Schools. As many of you know, some don't, I want to explain that we do interview every applicant that applies for a position in the district. And with regard to classroom positions, we interview them twice. We do that with the help of Gallup, Teacher Insight Results. So applicants will go online, do their first interview online, and then they'll participate in a video interview using sparkhire.com where they'll answer questions. All of those interviews are scored in both of those rounds as candidates are pushed out to building principals. We use Gallup for support insight for classified positions as well, and also for our leadership positions, we use Principal Insight. These tools really do help us create a line at the door when it comes to finding the very best and brightest talent. It allows our leaders to be very efficient in the execution of their duties, getting after the applicants that are most aligned with the key indicators, strategic indicators of the district. And so some of the information to share along, along that, that route is then fed to building principals and informs their, their selection process. This data set here shows a trend over time of where Liberty Public Schools is in attracting applicants for the position. It looks as if the, the pipeline is dwindling a little bit from this data. I would like to point out that, that the bump that you see in, in that trend line is due in large part to the Great Recession. For those of you who were a part of that era, there was a, a time of significant reductions in force in our profession around the area. And as a result, that did amplify artificially the applicant total. Absent that, it's been fairly level, but you will notice that last year there was a drop-off of even what's typical. In fact, the, the one thousand three hundred and four applicants that applied for teaching jobs is the lowest in this trend line history. You know, going back to two thousand seven, two thousand eight was near that with thirteen hundred and twenty. So you might wonder if that is a sign of some concern. It isn't necessarily because one of the things that, that we have enjoyed here in Liberty Public Schools is a very low turnover rate. Our retention is very high for classroom teaching positions. You see that over the, the course of the last fifteen, eighteen years, we've gone from upper eighty percent retention to the almost mid nineties. That is, to give it a little bit of context to frame it up, nationally suburban school districts experience about thirteen to fifteen percent turnover year over year, and we're at seven. So that gives you a little bit of a, an indication of where Liberty Public Schools in that, is in that. And so our low turnover last year specifically in classroom teaching positions meant we posted fewer positions. We sought out fewer applicants, and that is probably the key indicator for that thirteen hundred level. A better way to look at exactly how the teacher pipeline effect is, is impacting Liberty Public Schools is in our applicant to hire ratio. So Gallup tracks this data for us, and Gallup says nationally typically for every one certificated classroom position that is filled, districts have ten applicants to choose from, so a ten to one ratio. They were very excited to see last hiring season, we had an eighteen to one ratio. So if we were to hire a hundred people, our leaders, our principals had one thousand eight hundred applicants to choose from to fill those one hundred spots. That's a more accurate way to look at it, and you see that we've been in that sixteen, seventeen range with a little bit of a dip, couple of years, and then back up to eighteen. The data that Gallup provides for us also shows us where the, the applicant pool is nationally in a norm-referenced bell-shaped curve. And of those eighteen to one applicant ratios, you would think that the, the mean or the fiftieth percentile would mean that half of that total, nine, would be in the top half nationally for Gallup. Our district, though, is, is not average in attracting talent. So our applicant to hire ratio above the mean is twelve to one, so significantly higher in terms of the talent that our principals have to, to peruse when they're working to fill those positions. Now, this doesn't mean that we, we don't have our eye closely on the, on the teacher pipeline issue because there is a trend. You'll notice that our hiring season, like I mentioned, begins right now, runs through January, February, March at its peak, and then it trails off. And so a lot of times, our notification of positions that need to be filled trickle in over the same course of time that our, our talent is on the market for selecting. And so that's one of the reasons that we have the early notification incentive program. In my report, we show that twenty-two people have taken advantage of that early notification incentive. And that does allow our principals to get after the, the best and brightest talent in the most abundant time of availability. The good news is, for people that don't take advantage of that early notification and, and give us notice after January fifteenth, the talent pool is pretty consistent throughout the entire hiring season. So this, this graph shows the quality of candidates by month, and the taller bar, that gray bar, are the number of applicants that, that actually perform better than the top twenty-five percent nationally. Okay, the top quartile. And so you'll see that for Liberty Public Schools, that top quartile, the volume of, of top quartile talent stays pretty consistent throughout the entire hiring season. So even when we're faced with hiring after that peak bubble and that, and that quantity of applicants is trailing off in the summer months, the quality of that applicant pool is, is not diminishing at all. In fact, still very, very robust in terms of talent. August of twenty twenty showing forty-six percent scoring in the top twenty-five percent nationally, expressing interest in working Liberty Public Schools. So that's all very good news for us. However, we are concerned and always tend to be concerned with the pipeline nationally. As you know, we've implemented a Grow Your Own program specifically tailored to try to identify top talent while they're in high school. Help them catch a vision for our profession, encourage them to then go to college and get a degree and come back and, and work for Liberty Public Schools. Statistically speaking, kids that, that go off and major in education do come back and put in applications in their home district. That's not unique to Liberty. That's pretty much anywhere. They'll apply to as many as six different places on average. But one of them is, is nearly always their home school system. So when you invest in that Grow Your Own work, it certainly pays off for us. This particular data set shows the percent interest of graduating seniors in majoring in, in education. And you see over the last, you know, almost fifty years now, it has steadily dwindled. It peaked again in the nineties, but since the late nineties, early twenty-first century, it has gone down. So four point three percent of graduating seniors indicating an interest in public education. And so that is what is primarily the focus of the dwindling teacher pipeline and why we focus on Grow Your Own programs. For Liberty Public Schools, it looks like this, like how do national trends affect Liberty Public Schools? This is our certificated new hire induction classes, the percentage of those new hire classes that come to us straight out of college. Okay? So as you can see, if we go back to, you know, early twenty-first century, nearly sixty percent of a new hire induction class, whatever the size of that class was, were coming right out of college. The remaining balance, the forty percent, were veteran teachers to some degree, seeking employment with Liberty Public Schools. It peaked there at sixty-one, over sixty-one percent of the new hire induction class, and then has been dwindling down since that time. We have a slight peak last year, almost thirty-six percent of our new hire induction class were straight out of college. The balance then were veteran teachers from elsewhere. This trend shows us that the teacher pipeline, that dwindling teacher pipeline issue that is confronting school districts all across the nation is something that is affecting us. It's affecting us in a limited capacity and, and certainly in a different way, but time will tell if we don't focus on Grow Your Own, how big that impact will be for a school district like Liberty Public Schools. And so we do focus intently on that, on that number. And, and because of that, we've come to you, and you, as a Board of Education, have been significantly vested in a Grow Your Own teacher program. You're even scholarshipsing students of color who choose education as a profession. We've got two classes now of students that are in those schools majoring in education right now. But even before a formal Grow Your Own program, before the, the investment of scholarship money, it's important to note that as educators, we have been growing our own for, for decades, for maybe almost thirty years now. Educators are ambassadors. We can be the greatest voice for our profession and probably in the position to spot the best talent because we're with those kids a significant quantity of time in their, in their life. And, and so normally in this presentation, I invite a new teacher to come up here and kind of share their experience coming onboard with Liberty Public Schools. And I want to take a little different turn this time around. I've asked Garrett Brown. Mr. Brown is an art teacher at Epic Elementary, also teaches with, I think, Liberty High School as well. Garrett is a nineteen ninety-eight graduate of Liberty High School, well before Grow Your Own was ever a formal program, but very much the byproduct of a Grow Your Own mentality where many teachers and administrators in his life mentored and shepherded and ambassadored this profession to him. As a result, he graduated, decided not to be an educator right away, came and worked in the schools in a variety of capacities. And then eventually through, again, that the work of, of highly influential, positive relationships in his life, helped catch a vision for education as a profession, became an educator, taught in the, in the Kansas City, Missouri School District, and then came home to Liberty Public Schools. So I've invited him to come and share a little bit about his experience with the ambassadorship of a Grow Your Own program before. We had a formalized Grow Your Own program, and then I'll wrap up with questions. Mr. Brown?
Thank you so much, Dr. Vogelar. I'd like to just share, my name is Garrett Brown. I'm the art specialist, a specialist at Epic Elementary. And I also do some arts integration coaching for LPS. So I've worked at the high school, and I've worked with Heritage Middle School, and kind of before COVID, it was a bit of a moving position. Been a bit more stationary this year. It's nice to see so many familiar faces in the room. I teach some of your children and some of your family friends, and Angie, I think I just bump into you in the store all the time, so.
You do.
However, we get together, it's nice to see you.
Spending that paycheck.
Yeah, one time she chastised me in the freezer aisle for buying ice cream, and so it's good to see her again under these circumstances. But yeah, self-actualization is very hard work. Just ask any millennial who is attempting to carve a path for themselves in this ever-changing, unstable world. My path from being a graduate, about a quarter mile over there, is a bit of a zigzag. Myself, I've been a barista, a substitute teacher, a set painter, and a designer for the LPS Theater Department. I've been a long-term sub. I've been a building sub, and I've worked for several nonprofit organizations here in town, including the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Kansas City, artists helping the homeless, many others. All of that's to say, I didn't know I was a teacher at first. Fortunately, there were mentors or investors who recognized my potential, not necessarily as a teacher, but as someone who was capable of more, someone who could be developed, someone who could develop their own voice, and someone who really needed encouragement, really needed a nudge occasionally. And so I do want to be explicit. I do want to name names. Often, we don't give people their flowers and their credit until it's too late. So I want to make sure that I name some of the teachers, just some. I know I'll forget some people, who have really been a connective thread, connective tissue, getting me from my graduate profile to standing at this podium tonight. So teachers like Tammy Kennedy and Debbie Payne, they kept checking on me, giving me sub jobs, encouraging my development. David Young, who I, I admit is retiring this year, has been a huge advocate for me over the years, really decades. Sometimes it was news about a job posting, maybe it was a letter of recommendation for another job. Sometimes it was an email that kept me on the path. I never thought, you know, he was encouraging me to come back to Liberty. Sometimes he would, but really he was just trying to keep me on the path that was best for me. Maybe it was a long game. More on him later. Roger Kelly, he was a fine arts coordinator when I was a student and when I began teaching as a sub at Liberty, and now he's with Desi. He found me in K C P S when I was working there. And so it was a lot of people working together. Some of the teachers that I had as a student remarkably became colleagues of mine, became friends of mine, became encouragers of mine. And that transition for a young person like me was just, it was, it was life-altering. People that you used to call Mr. Young, you eventually get to call it David. And they get to, you know, encourage you to not give up and to, to take that extra course and get that extra certification that you need to be more qualified for a position that you might want down the road. Mr. A.J. Byrd here encouraged me to stay on the path when I was working for K C P S. I was in a particular season of struggle over there, and I remember running to him at the store, and he urged me to persevere. He said, I like you where you're at. I like you over there. And he said, if you ever think about coming back to Liberty, call me. Let me know. And he was urging me to persevere, to bloom where I was planted. And he was urging me to persevere, to bloom where I was planted. He wasn't trying to, you know, recruit me at that moment, but he was just trying to keep me on the path, and I'll be forever grateful for that. Years later, I got a text from Mr. Byrd that Mr. Young had mentioned me in a Team Liberty meeting, and it became apparent to me that my mentors had been collaborating. They were in cahoots. So it was time for me to come home. I feel divinely placed at Liberty Public Schools. I feel that Epic Elementary is such a good fit for me. I feel like I have agency and a voice and the full support of my administrators and my fine arts coordinators. I've been part of racial caucuses now, and I am confident that more of that type of work will happen in the future. I feel like Liberty Public Schools is putting their feet and their hands to the real work of equity in the city, and I feel like I'm really at the center of that, and I get to be part of that action. And so it's not just about what we do in the classroom, it's not just about the kids that I get to encourage every day and ignite their creativity, it's about really changing the community for the better in the long term, and I'm so privileged to be a part of that. I do get notes from kids that I want to share a few things. Kids wrote things on my Christmas cards that say, "You're feeding our imaginations, Mr. B. Keep spreading creativity, Mr. B." I even heard a kid say, "I love having a teacher that looks like me." These are not small things. To be a male teacher is already kind of rare, to be a black teacher is already kind of rare, to be a black male art teacher, I kind of get to be the unicorn. And so I feel very, very lucky to be where I am. I've not arrived, I'm a lifelong learner, but I'm beyond grateful to be here with you right now. I didn't get here alone. I had mentors, investors, teachers who saw my potential and are to this day still helping me to actualize it. Thanks for listening. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Vogelar.
So why do I share this? Mr. Brown is blessing kids today because of informal passions among teachers and other leaders of our profession to reach out and see potential and speak the words that inspire a commitment to our profession. Can you imagine what would happen if we formalized this? And so Grow Your Own two-point-oh, three-point-oh, we continue to iterate and reiterate exactly how we can ambassador this profession and use all of our teachers in more formal ways to ambassador our profession to our young people. Mr. Brown mentioned at the end there that he's received notes from students that said that it means a lot to them to have a teacher that looks like him. And the reality is, among our teachers, the pipeline is dwindling anyway, but for black males who enter our profession, it's dwindling even greater. I think the state of Missouri's average is one point two percent. Nationally, it's about two percent, so we're even below average nationally at a state level. But statistics are clear. Dr. Dixon Sehorn exposed me to some literature that said that black students who had just one black teacher by third grade were thirteen percent more likely to enroll in college, and those who'd have two were thirty-two percent more likely. So it makes a difference in the lives of kids. It's not coincidence, it's not happenstance, it makes a difference. This is a profession that is unique from all other professions, it really is a calling. It's a calling that Mr. Brown has committed to, it's a calling that a vast number of educators in our district are committed to. And you all are committed to that, you've demonstrated your commitment to that by scholarshiping, Grow Your Own programs, to inspire kids to make it through college and come back and make their home in Liberty Public Schools, to teach kids to stand in gaps that need to be stood in. So I wanted to carve out time today to not just give you a staffing report, but to thank you for your commitment. Thank you for your commitment not only to the district, but to our profession as a whole, and I thank you for your continued commitment as we formalize and future iterations of a Grow Your Own program to reach and teach this next generation of educators that will make a difference. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Vogelar. Any questions of Dr. Vogelar or Mr. B while we have him here? Questions from the two of them?
Dr. Vogelar, notice causing you to apply to LPS is one of the questions we ask, reputation of the school district, I see the numbers, is there any more qualitative feedback that you receive that you could share that kind of supports that?
Yeah, the data is actually quite encouraging. So not only do people indicate to the highest degree that it's the reputation of the district that they're applying at our website, which means the reputation is causing them to seek us out, right? They're not meeting us at fairs or at our push-out attempts, but they're seeking us out. And if you drill down on that data, the percentage of those high potential, potential and high potential, those that score in the fifty percentile or better with a top quartile, the largest size of that population are choosing that reason as well. So our reputation is paramount, and that's really a testament to everybody, Mr. Brown, the teachers all across the district, as well as the work that Dallas Ackerman does to help our district be a place that candidates, the best candidates, seek after. The, you know, question that that begets, of course, is what happens if that dwindles away? Not our reputation, but just an interest in seeking out a school system based on its reputation. Let's say it's replaced by some other element, salary or benefits or those kind of things. What will we do to adjust that? So that is where our data points us to, it's, we rely on it heavily, we weigh the banner significantly on that reputation and seeking out the best talent.
I remember you saying, right, the second item that causes folks to look out is advertisement. I thought that's what I saw. So that's crucial, because it reaches out in the corners where people might not come in contact. The good fortune that Derek and I had is we knew each other's families, but that doesn't happen always. And so we have to go sometime in some crevices and corners to reach people. And so I think advertising is really crucial, and it suggests, but the data by right or right?
Yeah, and we do, we have a lot of push advertisements, we obviously recruit, we go out to college campuses and career fairs, we connect in various forms to network with other teachers, and then kind of through a word-of-mouth campaign, teachers meet other teachers in that network and invite them to consider applying for the district, and so that's a part of that path as well. It's interesting, though, that the significant indicator in terms of advertisements, that people are seeking out are advertisements that we are advertising on our own websites. When we post a vacancy, that advertisement people seek out. And so what that tells me again is, our reputation is causing people to come to our website and seek us out, and then when they see us post positions on our website, then they respond and apply.
As well as, as well as seeking out those additional locations to post job vacancies. And so we've worked with the NAACP, the USDAO, other entities to ensure that we have an ability to post jobs and openings in diverse locations as well, to your point. So I think it's really a culmination of all those pieces, as Dr. Vogelar shared.
And social media is a big part of that, indeed, is a platform that we use extensively that reaches very broad there as well.
Other questions of Dr. Vogelar?
I would just like to thank Mr. Brown for taking his time to come and speak to us today. You did an amazing job, and thank you very much. And thanks for all of the things you do in your various buildings and your travels throughout the district. But be careful on the ice cream.
Yes, thank you. You're appreciated.
Thank you all. The last administration report then this evening comes from myself, and just a couple of items that I wanted to add for your awareness. We began the legislative session on January sixth, and so there is already a flurry of legislative proposals circulating in both the House and the Senate as it relates to education bills. So be on the lookout for updates coming out of Jefferson City. Additional information out of Jefferson City is slated for January twenty-seventh at three P.M., in which we'll be tuning in to the Governor, Governor Parsons' State of the State address, knowing that education will be at the very top of his list of items and priorities in entering into this calendar year. As mentioned earlier, Mr. Anderson shared the vaccine task force has come together consisting of community partners. Many of you have sat in those meetings of our community partners that consist of the district, Liberty Hospital, William Jewell, the City of Liberty. We've added, since the course of the pandemic, Clay County Public Health Center. We meet every Wednesday at nine o'clock virtually. To be able to share updates one with another, we've been doing that since March. A byproduct of that work has been in and around, how do we come together to be able to create this task force as it relates to the vaccine? So while we're not able to convene, you know, periodically like we've done in the past to hear updates face-to-face, one from another, just know that that partnership remains strong and is in fact meeting more regularly as it relates to our community partners. So appreciate Steve in representing the district on that vaccine task force. Another item that we continue to push forward is in and around accountability and assessment at the state level. And so last week at our State Board of Education meeting, there were a couple of presentations, one in and around assessment, another one as it relates to MSIP VI. The quick item in and around assessment is that we will be administering end-of-course exams and map assessments later this spring. How that transpires, how that transpires as it relates to our face-to-face learners as well as our hybrid and our virtual learners has yet to be determined, and so we're awaiting that detail to come out of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The other piece tied to accountability and accreditation is really in and around some of the ideas folded into MSIP VI. Innovative assessment practices, different approaches to accreditation, opportunities to innovate, of which we've been involved with from the onset, whether it's just direct conversations with DESI from our district, or whether it's participation in the Show Me Task Force through the Missouri Association of School Administrators, but we continue to advocate and try to advance that amidst the pandemic. Last thing that I wanted to share is another partnership that we have with the Ewing Marion Kaufman Foundation, which really is a solid partnership that brings together kind of our by-state area, the Kansas and the Missouri side, and really that Kansas City metropolitan area. We focus on topics like real-world learning and how to increase market value assets for our students across the region. More recently, we've tackled the issues in and around navigating a pandemic in COVID-19. In addition, this topic of innovative assessment, and we're glad to announce, a smaller group of about ten districts will be convening on January twenty-fifth to begin the first Equity in Schools cohort. I know Dr. Dixon Sehorn has shared that in the past as well. And so we wanted to highlight those networks, those partnerships, we appreciate the work of everyone involved in trying to move our districts forward as it relates to these last several months, but then also being able to think about space to innovate in and around assessment, accountability, and accreditation. So would certainly entertain any questions that the Board may have of me.
Have you had much discussion yet with some of the groups like cooperating school districts regarding the, some of the committee assignments going on in Jefferson City? In particular, the Education Committee that is heavily stacked with reps that are anti-public education, that are definitely pro-voucher, pro-school choice, and some of the legislations expected then, in particular, this session?
Yes and yes. In terms of the conversations with cooperating school districts, other groups like MASA, Missouri School Boards Association, as we see updates coming out, and that you're correct, a lot of the conversations thus far has centered around some of those pro-open enrollment or ESAs, education savings accounts. As far as the committee assignments itself, as far as them being heavily weighted with kind of Republicans, obviously, and them being kind of anti-public school, I don't know that we have a whole lot of influence there, other than some of what we do as far as our outreach, but then also through those various associations. I do know, and Sandra, I believe, shared some information with you, coming up on January the twenty-eighth, Sandra, cooperating school districts will be holding kind of their legislative appreciation event. There's kind of a pre-meeting to hear from their lobbyist, Steve Carroll, and then afterward opportunity to connect with our legislators. This is being held virtually. That's something that I would encourage all of us to be able to keep close attention to this spring session, in that many are leveraging school districts' inability to resume classes face-to-face in terms of trying to kind of advocate for additional change that they've been trying to advocate for years. So some see that as an opportunity, just something to be aware of.
I know there's no influence that we have over who's on the committees, it's just, I think, this year in particular, it's stacked.
Yeah.
Though I don't know that any of the reps are educators.
Yeah.
And there had been at least some educators in the past, and there's even one rep who's on the committee who, through social media, had responded to a teacher who was talking about teacher salaries and how they're not keeping up with inflation and so forth with a statement about, "No one owes you anything, go find a different job." And that's the attitude that we've got in Jefferson City towards public education this year.
I think it's an uphill battle as it relates to the session. We do want to continue to remain connected with our local representatives and senators. The other thing I would make mention of is that we do have a concerted effort in the Northland School districts to be able to kind of advocate on each other's behalf. And North Kansas City has a designated liaison, Tammy Henderson, you may have heard her name or seen some of her updates, but she is constantly, pre-pandemic, in the Capitol, working the halls and talking with legislators. She's doing that from a little bit further distance this time around, but connecting with us as issues arise. So we may lean on you all as it relates to reaching out to legislators or parents as well, to people to voice concerns and challenges that school districts are facing. The other thing I would say to that end, there's a vacuum or a void of success stories. Districts may be able to share their successes and challenges in their local communities, but from a state-level standpoint, there is a communications vacuum, and so we have to share those good stories as well to be able to let districts know, communities know, parents know. Many of our districts are trying to work to get back to face-to-face or providing virtual learning opportunities, setting up virtual schools, all the challenges and accomplishments that we've faced over the last several months. Additional questions?
All right.
That concludes our administration reports.
We'll move this into the unfinished business portion, we'll start with five dot zero one, board policy revisions.
Five point oh one includes a couple of items for your review, the first of which are policies that are presented to you this evening for second read. We saw these in earlier, earlier in December. The second portion to this item is the administrative procedures that are presented to you for review, so the recommended action language is posted there.
There's no questions? Move for the action.
I move the Board adopt the listed policies on second read. Second.
Any further discussion?
Cheating, now you don't have to name all those letters.
I agree.
Pick carefully.
Sandra?
A.J.
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Marcy Carries?
Moving into five dot zero two, the twenty-one, twenty-two district academic calendars.
This one is also presented to you this evening for second read and your consideration. Before we kind of walk through the highlights of both the Liberty Public Schools calendar and the Epic calendar, I want to again thank Team Liberty for their work, as they do each year, in looking at a variety of scenarios and drafts of our calendar and then bringing recommendations forward out of that process. We do know something unique this year is really the legislative session, as we were just discussing, and whether or not something will surface out of that to give more control to the local school district in and around setting dates and perhaps tackling the issue that was changed in statute from just a couple of years ago. We'll watch that and monitor that over the course of this spring. If there is anything legislatively that should cause us to change course, we would certainly keep the Board informed, as well as our community. The other piece that I wanted to make sure and mention to everyone is that we initially explored a two-hour early release being included in the calendar, which aligns to our strategic plan in working to incorporate an early release. We have since scaled that back to a one-hour early release on Wednesdays. From that standpoint, looking into next year, that works with all of our schools as far as their minimum required hours, and we continue to exceed that based upon what DESI has put in place. The early release allows us to embed teacher collaboration time in and around four essential questions that are part of professional learning communities. And so professional learning communities research speaks to the value and importance of embedded teacher collaboration time. In years past, what did we do? We added another hour, if you'll recall, that structure at the middle level, where we added additional planning time. As that was removed, we lost that collaboration time and are looking at trying to bring that back. Centered around these four key questions, what do we want all students to know and be able to do? be able to do? How will we know if they learn it? How will we respond when some students do not learn? And then how will we extend the learning for students who are already proficient? So that's the structure and the impetus and the guidance that we have put in place in and around early release schedules for both this spring as well as the year to come. In looking at inclement weather days, one of the items I wanted to also share is our ability to leverage virtual learning days through our AMIX structure through DESI. That's our alternative methods of instruction. Sure, you'll notice that that looks different on our calendars and that we'll have virtual learning days when we do experience inclement weather. The other piece that's important to note is working to collaborate with Northland school districts, and that it becomes a little bit of a challenge as we think about all of those entities that serve students outside of the traditional classroom. That includes Metropolitan Community College and our Maple Woods campus through our early college program. It includes two career centers, Northland Career Center as well as the Excelsior Springs Career Center. It includes Northland Center for Advanced Professional Studies, our NCAPS program, and it also includes Kansas City Tech Academy. So trying to coordinate our district's calendar with those entities and then the other school districts in and around the region is a challenge, but we're going to be working on that as each district sets their calendar at various times this time of year. To hit some highlights for LPS in the 2021-22 calendar, August 11th is our new teacher orientation, our first day of school scheduled for August 24th. Another item to highlight is Thanksgiving break scheduled for November 24th through 26th, the end of our semester ending prior to winter break, and that is on December 21st, with winter break scheduled for December 22nd through November 4th. Turning over into the 2022 calendar year then, another notable item would be teacher workday on January 5th, with classes resuming that following day on January 6th. March 14th is our currently scheduled spring break for the 14th through the 18th. That puts this then at the last day of school on May 27th. So that is the Liberty Public Schools 2021-22 calendar. To shift over then to the Epic calendar, just a couple of items to make note of. We start a little bit earlier at Epic in and around our ability to do so as permitted by DESI and leveraging that time as reported for summer school. And so we wanted to distinguish that piece a little differently, and so we've kind of captured it in kind of epic theme, that being globe or those first days of school being getting learners onboard to be epic. That's what globe stands for. Again, Liberty Public Schools starting on August 24th, you see some similar dates that align to our regular school district calendar. And then the last notable item to mention in and around the Epic calendar is June 10th, which is scheduled for our tentative last day of school, that being the end of the Epic calendar year from that standpoint. The rest of it remains similar. You have a breakdown of student contact days, returning teacher contract days, and new teacher contract days provided for you there as well, treating inclement weather the same at Epic as we would for the remainder of the district and leveraging our virtual learning days. So we present that to you for your consideration this evening.
Can I ask a question?
You bet.
I have a few questions.
Yeah, Kim Marie.
For Dr. Vogelar, can you give us just a little bit of context on the kinds of conversations that Team Liberty had around the early release and their reactions to that, the reactions carrying that to next year?
Turn the microphone here off here. Yes. So as you know, the process for Team Liberty begins almost right out of the gate in August. We're pulling calendars together and working. This year was a little bit unique with COVID. We did a subcommittee to pull that together, but they, obviously, one of the things that they're competing with or dealing with each year is the way professional development is rolled out as a system. Obviously, we want it to be job embedded and we want it to be ongoing. That increases the greatest likelihood of transferring that learning into classroom practice, and so collaboration is really important. Absent those early release days, Team Liberty knows that you have to substitute those teachers, pull them out of the classroom to build in that collaboration, that common collaboration time. So the early release has been a topic that the, that Team Liberty has been addressing, have been working to wrestle through in collaboration with Dr. Westfall and Dr. Moore to try to work that in, in as meaningful a way as possible. And so this year, the early release, you know, topic, I guess, you know, took some traction and was developed into the calendar that you have before you. It's probably been three, four years of continual conversation though.
Anything to add, Dr. Westfall or Dr. Moore, in response to Kim Marie's question? Okay.
So just to clarify though, is it a positive discussion? They support this decision? They like where it's headed? They feel like it's good?
Very, very positive and for the purpose of mitigating the pullouts. The teachers want to be in the classroom with their kids, and so opportunities to have that collaboration built into the schedule that saves from having to do the substitute teachers, exposing kids to substitute teachers while they collaborate is a high priority.
And we've also for years have had the late start at the high school level, some schools, and it's changed. Sorry, it's changed from time to time. It's changed from time to time. And so we've had early release or we've had late start where the high school teachers have had that opportunity to work together. And so this actually, they didn't have that, we didn't do it this year because of, we wanted to make sure that we had the extended time with students, but we feel like it is valuable and the other grade levels have asked for that, like Dr. Vogelar said, for the last three to four years.
So that's your question, Kim Marie?
It does, thank you.
Yep.
And I think Angie, you had a question as well?
I do. When you say that this is time for teacher collaboration, can you define what that collabora, if you know, what that collaboration is going to look like more so next year because hopefully we will be past pandemic state?
Sure. Part of the work that we're trying to do right now is to figure out ways to move those strategic plan goals, and the key to measuring learning is changing. And so part of what they have to do is have time to work together, to look at that student evidence and start comparing what they're going to use that for in order to move to competency based. So that's one example, very specific example, of the time that they're going to be using that otherwise would be either a professional development day or pullout time. So we can get those kinds of things tackled during the release time that we just couldn't do any other time of the year. That's just one example, but very specific.
As a previous middle school teacher who had that additional hour that Dr. Vogelar talked about, not Dr. Vog, did you talk about that or you talked, whoever, some doctor talked about. I found that in my entire almost 30-year career to be one of the best things that we had available to us because that gave us time to collaborate with like colleagues, teams, talk about students as a group, share information. I'm really excited that we're doing this because I've heard of other districts that have done it and thought it was a great idea. But I just, I know that there were a lot of things that educators found it to be useful for, that you didn't have to leave the building for, because that is, that is a stressful thing when you have to prepare to be out of your classroom, because somebody has to come in and teach those children. And I think sometimes people forget that when teachers leave, they're not just taking off for the day, they are preparing lessons, they are preparing their kids, they're preparing their classroom for someone else to come in and do that education piece that they're going to be out learning something about. So I commend you for putting this on the calendar, and I'm really glad that Team Liberty, you know, had a discussion about this and felt it to be useful as well.
Thank you. As you know, this year has been exceptionally challenging for our staff to do that because really the work that Dr. Tucker described around PLCs, we just have not been able to provide that amount of time for them to get that work done. We see that trickling out. This has been a goal for us for years, and so we've finally been able to work it through the changes in DESI, through the gifts that our families have given us, through your cooperation to offer this to our teachers. Thank you.
I think it's a great idea.
The other thing that I would add in respect to care for kids and supportive families, of which this may create a burden as we've done this spring, trying to figure out how to create that safety net for those students that do need after-school care during that early release window, those supports will continue as well. So appreciate Steve Anderson and Dr. Moore, Dr. Westfall, building leaders, staff, working to problem solve that, and on all the logistics that that involves from Kid Zone to transportation and shifting over the course of those Wednesdays. So additional questions that you all may have in respect to the calendar items?
Are there likely more adjustments that are going to be made regarding that support? It's not over yet, we're still living at that, aren't we?
In respect to which?
In respect to the.
The calendars?
In respect to the support of families.
Absolutely. And if there's a family whose circumstance changes, for example, where perhaps early on, they could have had their child go home and be attended to, if maybe something adjusts along the way, we're certainly going to troubleshoot with our families in and around that as well. And we'll continue to do that until the next year. So, good question.
Okay. Any other conversation? Have a motion?
I move that, wait a minute, I lost it. I move the board adopt the 2021-2022 district and Epic elementary calendars.
Second.
Sandra?
AJ.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Marsha Carries.
Moving on to 5.03 legislative priorities.
This is another item we've been working on over the course of the last couple of months, and so I appreciate the feedback that you all have provided. I did want to highlight some changes, but before we do that, wanted to mention kind of a collective collaborative effort, including cooperating school districts of greater Kansas City, Missouri School Boards Association, Missouri Association of School Administrators in that advocacy work on behalf of all Missouri children. And so we look at kind of what the issues are that are coming forward and adjust accordingly as far as our key priorities and legislative considerations. In terms of Liberty Public Schools documentation that will be shared with our area legislators upon your approval, our legislative considerations fall into the categories of highly qualified staff, governance, taxation, economic development incentives, and bonding capacity. A couple of items that we wanted to either emphasize more or include for the first time under the governance section of our legislative considerations, really working to emphasize local control, and that is you all as that governing body that's elected by our community and the work that you put into compensation, curriculum evaluation, professional development, calendar decisions, programs of study. And so really trying to emphasize that those decisions, we believe, are best made at that local level. In and around taxation, looking to try to explore additional sources of revenue, we inserted that into that conversation, into our legislative considerations, knowing that other entities kind of jockey for those additional right resources as well. The last piece under the legislative considerations we included was in and around bonding capacity. And folded in a specific statement or sentence, and it speaks to this, consideration should be given to include revenues diverted due to chapter 100 abatements within a school district's overall bonding capacity. And we've been kind of poking into this over the course of the last really year and a half, and recognize that that is excluded from our overall bonding capacity and feel like that could bolster school districts, not just like Liberty Public Schools, but others, with an additional bonding capacity to be able to put toward voters for their consideration on a prospective bond issue. The second section then of our priorities are those key priorities that fall into the areas of learners, innovation, and resources. We did have a couple of additions that we wanted to make you aware of, and so I appreciate you all raising these to our attention. Under the category of learners, the statement would read, Liberty Public Schools Board of Education supports the assurance that all learners are able to access equitable and inclusive learning opportunities in preparation for their future pursuits. That's not only important to us, but if we're truly in this for all kids, then it's important to all kids in every district across the state of Missouri. Another item folded in under learners would be Liberty Public Schools Board of Education, support additional state funding for the expansion of early childhood education opportunities, folding that into our statements. We've worked on that locally within the Kansas City area over the course of the last several years, but wanting to really emphasize that within the legislature, and we know that that's a priority of Governor Parsons. Under the category of innovation, a bullet that was added, a statement would read, Liberty Public Schools Board of Education supports the development of purposeful assessment practices utilizing an adaptive and comprehensive assessment tool. This speaks to some of the work that we've done with MoAP as far as the Missouri Assessment Program in trying to move things forward, along with our growing work with the Kaufman Foundation and area school districts across the Kansas City area. Those are the ads that we had since the last time that you saw the legislative priorities. Our next step upon your approval will be to coordinate with Kim Marie Graham as board president and craft a letter to our area legislators and be able to send that off to our area representatives and senators. We typically try to time that with the governor's State of the State address, it's a little bit later this year in the month of January, so we will go ahead and send this off to our legislators pending your approval, and then follow up with them if there's anything that surfaces out of the governor's comments as it relates to the 2021 State of the State address. So we'll leave it there for your consideration and certainly open it up for any questions you all may have with me.
When you talk bonding capacity, are you talking in regards to the chapter 100s or the percentage that is currently in place, or both?
It's really both.
Okay.
And so the ability for districts to be able to bond above what is currently within statute, that has always been kind of something that districts have advocated, particularly those that are growing. Right now, we're positioned well, having worked through our debt structure and our debt service kind of performance and projection looking ahead. So that may not be as much of a concern for us now as it was from years past. I think what most people are not aware of when it comes to looking at the calculation for your bonded indebtedness and bonding capacity is your property assessments, abated revenues, and where all of that flows. And so really, our ability to land on those chapter 100 values that currently are not, we're not being given credit for that as it relates to our bonding capacity. So that's something we've tried to advocate for at the state level in trying to trap that. What else would you add to that, Cindy?
I think you hit it square on the head. It would just be an additional 15% of assessed valuation that we're not able to capture in that bonding capacity right now.
Because of those chapter 100s?
Yes.
The value excluded from the value that you can count.
It is still assessed value that exists within our district, but because of the tax favorable treatment that it receives in our area, it's not included in that assessed valuation.
Got it.
But it still provides value to us.
And it's just chapter 100, right? The other incentive plans are still captured.
We're giving credit for those, but not the chapter 100s.
Not chapter 100.
Would you add anything to that, Steve?
The only thing I would add is just the chapter 100 process, it results in the city, in this case, retaining ownership of the property, thus making it tax exempt, thus not placing it in that overall assessed value. And so this is really just to recognize that it's actual, it's on the books, and to add to the overall assessed valuation.
Can you ballpark that figure just for people who are listening, what we're talking about?
Not right off the top of my head.
We could look into that, yeah.
I'm just, I mean, I'm just curious, you know.
Or quantify the chapter 100 value.
It's significant, it's a significant number.
Okay.
We'll follow up with you on that.
In most.
Go ahead.
Most districts probably are not aware of this, so their local legislators are not aware of this issue because it doesn't, it has not happened in most districts taxing areas.
Yeah, you're correct. And so there are many that may not have any dollars abated from chapter 100.
And no awareness of the issue.
Correct. And so we've advocated for it and poked into it with the assistance of Stifel Nicolaus in terms of our partners being able to kind of work on that at the state level as well. So as we make progress, we'll certainly relay that to the board. Andy, you had something as well?
I was just going to mention that I know normally we send the letter and the priorities to.
to our reps, our state senator. Maggie Nernburn is a Democrat on the committee, and she's a teacher in North Kansas City or was a teacher in North Kansas City. So we may want to, and so she's in Clay County. We may want to include her in our list for that letter this year.
Okay.
She's in District 15.
Thank you.
And actually, just to add to Andy's, do we have to limit it to our legislators or can we, I mean, particularly for those people that are on the legislative committees that, that deal directly with these issues?
Right.
Would that be something to look into?
You certainly, you certainly could broaden it. I think, starting with your education committees, that's, that's probably appropriate. But yeah, we've had, we've had that same question kicked around in terms of our conversations is do you take it and extend it to like the full body of both houses in the legislature? You could. I think you're going to get more response, obviously, from your local folks and, and members that serve on education committees.
Absolutely.
So I think that's a good outreach and then certainly within people within the Northland if we feel like that's of value, so, yeah. Good questions.
All right. If you, no more discussion or questions? Do you have a motion?
I move the board adopt the 2021 legislative priorities.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Sandra?
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Out of unfinished into new business, starting with 6.01, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
Wanted to turn that over to Dr. Vogelar to give us an update on that particular item for your consideration.
Thank you. We first discussed this in the study session, that the deadline of December 31, 2020 was really arbitrarily chosen by the federal government. We were watching to see if they were going to extend that leave. Having it, having this FF-CRA leave just end in the middle of a school year is not ideal. So this resolution does allow us to extend it, even though the federal government did not extend it and it expired on December 31. This resolution was written by MSBA specifically for this purpose, to make retroactive. That leaves continuance back to January 1. It is specified in paragraph two of the resolution to end April 30th, 2021, and you might ask why that date. It's just as arbitrarily chosen. We don't have a crystal ball and we aren't exactly sure how long this will need to be in place. We may be coming in April with a resolution to extend the resolution, or we might find that the need for it no longer exists. So that's what the resolution is. Susan Goldhammer at MSBA was wonderful in partnering with us to extend this leave.
Questions on that item of Dr. Vogelar?
I move the board adopt the resolution as written, which extends the COVID-19 leave as part of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act FF-CRA that expired on December 31st, 2020.
Second.
Third.
Sandra?
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to 6.02, contracts, purchases, bids.
We do have one item presented to you this evening for emergency purchase consideration, and that is through vendor Rosetta Stone in providing services for ELL students, particularly language assistance. And so that was provided with information to you on January 15th in the Friday update. The total is minimal, that's $266.67. Anything to add on that item, Mr. Anderson? Would just present that to you for your consideration.
I move the board approve the Rosetta Stone emergency purchase.
Second.
Any discussion? No? Sandra?
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving into Section 7, Board of Education, talking first about 7.01 legislation and advocacy. We've talked a little bit about it. Angie, do you have anything you would like to add?
Well, I was asked to come to the Capitol today to testify at the education meeting regarding charter schools. I declined because I'm not big on going to the Capitol in person right now for a variety of reasons, but will be, I did let, Susie Goldhammers in charge of that, let her know. And if I do that, I will probably be coming to you guys for information. But part of the reason that I do that is because we've been told over and over again, there is power in our voice and there are many education issues moving through whatever legislative body this year. And just like David said, there are a lot of people that just don't realize some of the, the factors that we face. And so if anybody else would be interested in doing that, either in person or virtually, I can hook you up with the people to give you training. So, but other than that, I, not much else.
7.02, you will note the upcoming meetings coming up, study session right around the corner on February 2nd.
Is that the new book?
That is the new book.
Correct.
You'd been here last time.
Chapter 1 and 2.
I was here virtually last time.
I did notice within the book, there's some fill-in-the-blank stuff up front. Do we, are you expecting us to answer some of those?
Yes, if you'll take a stab at that.
Fair enough.
We will probably incorporate that into our study sessions.
Okay.
Are you checking our work?
There are no right answers.
Be great on purpose.
Wrong answers. There are no wrong answers. Make sure I say that right.
7.03, moving into board remarks.
Mr. President, if I may.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, on the upcoming meetings, the, I did put, I believe you received an email from cooperating schools of grave Kansas City. So if you plan to attend, I need to let them know tomorrow. So if you could just, if you don't know tonight, if you could just send me a text or email tomorrow, that would be great.
Thank you for reminding me.
And that is entirely virtual.
It is entirely virtual.
Are they going to feed us?
They're going to do delivery of food. Door dare.
All right. 7.03, board remarks. I will say, I know Dallas sent out a, an email last week with regards to Staff Appreciation Week, which is next week. Is that correct? There are several opportunities for lots of people to participate, but I think it'd be great if, if some from the board would participate. So take a peek, see if there's an hour or two you might be able to find Monday through Thursday at some point at, at a couple of our buildings, just to stop by and say thanks for everything that everybody's doing. Any other comments? Okay. 8.01.
I move the board to turn.
Second.
I hope that's a motion I didn't read.
Sandra?
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, everyone.